Twenty twenty-two is six thirty-four P M. And the Sunapee Middle High School Gymnasium want to call the Sunapee School District Board Meeting to order. If we could start with a roll call. Mr. Moynihan, work our way around.
Sean Moynihan, Principal, Sunapee Elementary School.
Walter Eastern, Principal, Sunapee Central Elementary School.
Ed Anderson, School Board.
Eric Paul Paul, School Board.
Danny Nichols, School Board.
Scott Ritzman, School Board.
Jesse Tyler, School Board.
Russell, Superintendent, Kelly Russell, behind me, this administrator.
Okay. Get our eyes, respect for the flag of the.
We declare the United States to be ruled on one nation under God.
All right, thank you. So I just wanted to do a quick review of the evening, a little bit about how the school board works before we get to approval of the school board meeting minutes. So seeing some new faces here, which is always great to see. Um, I'll keep this as brief as I can. So five of us on the school board serve together, all voices equal. I just happen to be the chair in that role running the meeting. We have subcommittees like the capital improvement subcommittee, which this year had Carrie and Andy figuring out how to move forward with safe building space, priority being the Sunapee Elementary School life safety issues and dilapidated modulators and other things we'll talk about again in the meeting. Talked about that earlier at the bond meeting. Ed and Carrie have served for the contract negotiations. So the way the subcommittee's work is that two board members are on each subcommittee, hopefully around their strengths and interests. When it came to the negotiations, Ed has and Carrie had the most experience. Also, as we said in prior meetings, Andy and I have family members that work in the district, so we had nothing to do with the negotiations because they did a nice job working with administration in order to do that. The other subcommittee is the policy, which led by Scott Ritzman with the active state house, there's always a lot to keep track of and a lot of boards struggle with keeping up with the policies. That's another subcommittee. So majority rules of three out of the five. I hope, I hope that's helpful, but we've covered bond budget and accepting unanticipated funds so far tonight. So we'll touch on a lot of those, but for those of you that weren't here the whole time, I was hoping three minutes would be enough. So we're going to jump right in. Our last thing is the school board has one employee, the superintendent, who runs the district, and most of what we focus on is procedural, and you're going to see that with a series of meeting minutes to approve and action items. It's a long list, Robert's rules, so hang in there with us as we work our way through. We've been very busy. Tonight's kind of a culmination of the year's work. I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the December first school board meeting, please.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes of December first.
By Andy, the second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, corrections, questions? All right. So with so much, so many actions tonight, I'm just going to say look for motion, and if somebody wants to just jump into the second, we can save some banter back and forth just for process. All right. All in favor of approving the minutes for the December first school board meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of this school A B C meeting for December first, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the A B C meeting December first, twenty one.
Second.
Thank you, Scott and Carrie. Any questions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of the school A B C meeting December first, twenty twenty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the school A B C meeting for December eighth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school board A B C meeting December eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
I'll second it.
Ed and Andy, thank you. Any questions or corrections on the notes, those written? All in favor of approving the minutes for the December eighth school A B C meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-one meeting. All right. It warmed up. I look for a motion to approve the minutes of December eighth school board non-public session.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the December eighth school board non-public session.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott and Carrie. Any questions, corrections on the notes? All in favor of approving the minutes for the December eighth school board non-public session, please say aye.
Aye.
Manus, thank you. Minutes, I look for a motion to approve the minutes of the C I P meeting January sixth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the C I P meeting January sixth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
Carrie and Ed, thank you very much. Any questions or corrections on the meeting notes, written? All in favor of approving the minutes of the C I P meeting January sixth, twenty twenty-two, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Agenda review. I, we got a full agenda. I don't have anything to add, anything from the board. Uh, that's next. It's, uh. Yeah, you're right. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so thank you, Scott. Solid vice chair. The way the agenda is typed, it says public comment is next, and then we had discussed this with. I'm just trying to remember. I didn't bring my notes from that.
The motion was made last, maybe it was made two months ago to number two, one, number one would be up. And last meeting, the community asked me to put your input before you made the decision.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry. It is right. Sorry. I don't have, I didn't have that set of notes with me, and that was just reflected in the last two minutes of making sure we're set. Beyond that, did you have anything to add?
No, I just need to change the date of the teacher's resignation. We're going to get the.
Okay. Okay. Back to it. Public forum in accordance to policy B E D H, each speaker, you can come to the mic there so everyone can hear you, introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes. We have twenty minutes of the meeting set aside so we can hear from the public. We hear from the public through these comments, we get emails, have informal conversations, but in the meeting structure, this is the time to hear from the public. And again, it's great to see some new faces here and see that you brought your opinions out on a Wednesday night. Do you want to go ahead, Laura? Oh, four minutes. No, what did it say? Sorry, I thought you were signaling me. Does anyone want to go to the mic to make comment? We can move on, but I was kind of hoping to hear voices. Please introduce yourself, your address.
My name is Chris Hearn. I live at five hundred and three North Road. Speaking on behalf of my daughter and all parents that feel the passing of the school should be based on parent choice. I am a licensed physical therapist in the state of New Hampshire, fourteen years of medical practice, and I hold a doctorate in three ways. I'm a published author, and I sit on the year group for three international journal journals. Therefore, I have a strong understanding of science and best practices to decision making. Two points that need to be made immediately. Covid nineteen poses a little note prep to help each other in the absence of COVID disease. The numbers are available for you to see for yourself. This matter is settled. Covid nineteen's mode of transmission is that infectious particles expelled in the air, not as aerosols. These particles may remain present for hours. This is also a settled matter. The use and mandates, the use and mandates of masks has been a very contentious issue. Unfortunately, despite their widespread use, there remains no high quality evidence to speak to their effectiveness. Numerous studies have reached the conclusion that masks offer protective effect. However, these contain methodological flaws and lack rigor and overstate their conclusions. Furthermore, more recently, Bruce Allen colleagues from the Center for Infectious Disease Research and Policy Center from the University of Minnesota, combined the results of two published studies, to model and determine the time to infectious virus from an infected individual when face covers are employed. What they found was that a typical cloth mask may offer twenty-six minutes of protection to both infected and unaffected individual wearing them. That time increases to sixty minutes with the use of a high quality surgical mask. Keep in mind, these numbers do not account for the constant touching and readjustment that occurs to children. Be sure that these numbers will decrease in a virulent situation and highlight the level of effectiveness of these school setting as students are indoors for periods far exceeding twenty-six to sixty minutes. Now, I'm not suggesting that masks be banned, but simply be left up to the parents. The risk that the current Covid nineteen mitigation strategy poses to our children's mental health and well-being is revealed. Pediatric psychiatric inpatient beds have been pulled through lockdown. Conversation that I've had with mental health workers reveals an unprecedented rise in depression and anxiety in children that they do not have resources available to combat. Colleagues of mine have been in the hospital doing one-on-ones who they're responsible for supervision of patients that may be harmed to themselves. I am saddened to learn that many of these patients are children. My own patient, fourteen-year-old girl, told me she was dehydrated because she was too scared to take her mask down to drink. A child terrified of the very early breed is unacceptable. We do not know how far the rivers of these strategies will go. The opinion that they don't mind because they don't complain is a straw man argument and not an appropriate metric to measure the effect of the sense. We have no right to saddle our children with the burden of our own fear of being exposed to this virus, when it may cause harm to their psychological and emotional well-being. I only ask that we think harder about what we are doing with the long-term consequences we're facing.
Thank you for. Thank you for being here. Thanks for speaking up. Appreciate it. Other voices, please?
Hi, my name is Adrian Scott. I live at two hundred and fifty zero. I have two children in the school. I've been up there before. I believe that masks are very important. We had several outbreaks while we were not masking, and since we started masking mandates, our numbers have stayed level. We had one or two in the school throughout the week, but we have not had another outbreak involving thirty solid kids. I have, my son, he's a bit of hypochondriac or a germaphobe, and he is very concerned about germs to the point where he's making a hand. And he's concerned about his friends not wearing masks, which he is, because they're spreading germs, and that is concerning to him, and that psychiatric problems to him. So being in a school where everyone else is masked and he feels safe is very helpful to him. I would also like to say that I've appreciated the weekly emails with the updates to know how, like how things are trending. And Omicron has, is much more transmissible to children, and they've found a fifty percent uptick in hospitalization in children since Omicron has been prevalent. And our numbers over this past weekend have topped ten thousand. Our hospitals are close to the brink. And quite frankly, I spent my entire day looking for monoclonal antibodies for patients because we're out in New Hampshire. My son also has cardiac disease, so if he were to get Covid, he may be hospitalized. And he has, my other son has respiratory disease, so if he gets Covid, he may be hospitalized in front of a ventilator, and that's not something that I am interested in happening. There is multiple inflammatory syndrome that can happen in children, even if they have just a mild case, and children are dying from that, and it is very. Number two, my second concern involves the school nurse. We have gone, our, as a district, we've gone through six nurses since last year. We've had one retire, we had one that was not offered her job back. We had one that quit a week before school started. We have one that kind of filled in that position. We have one that took over, she lasted three months, and then she was released of her job. And I think it's important to look into that, why we as a district cannot keep a school nurse on staff. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for sharing your opinion. That was, I hope there are other speakers. This time is for the board to hear from people directly, and something that I'm amazed by in our community at a time when people are mostly yelling at each other or ignoring each other, as an example, in this first two speakers can have absolutely opposite views, but the civility of sharing those has been sustained in Sunapee. So it is, it is wonderful to see that we can have that. Some of the longest exchanges I've had in emails and conversations are with folks who have the opposite view of my personal view on the masks, so I really appreciate everybody being here, voicing what you're, appropriately voicing what you're passionate about, even if some of those beliefs are in great contrast. Welcome to the mic, please introduce yourself.
Kelly Pickett, eighth of Sunapee Circle in Sunapee. My name is Kelly Pickett, and my family and I moved here from New York right before the start of the school year. My husband and I were born and raised in New York, but decided it was time to leave because of the mandates, including masking in schools, for having too much a negative impact on our children. We fell in love with New Hampshire, and we chose Sunapee specifically because of the school system. We have two children. My oldest recently just started to take her bath. Masks were strongly recommended in his two last year. He wore it every day, and one day, when he got off the bus, he wouldn't take it off. He told me he was scared to breathe in the germs and the bacteria in our home. He wished to keep his mask on. This fear that was instilled in him was unfair and it broke my heart. We spent the next few months working with a therapist to go in the opposite direction on how he was no longer allowed to wear a mask. We worked with his school and his teachers so we can reteach him that fresh air around him was safe to breathe. We partially chose Sunapee because of the reasonable parent choice mask policy that the school enacted this summer. Carter has an I D P, he gets special education services, and has some other challenges that I'm not going to get into right here. I will say that he's a sensory seeker, and when he's wearing a mask, which he loves to do, he likes to chew it and suck on it. His multiple masks are absolutely disgusting at the end of the day when he gets home from school. There is no benefit for my son or anyone else around him to be near him when he is wearing this drenched, chewed mask. On the Monday after Thanksgiving, I began to feel some cold-like symptoms. I immediately isolated myself from my family, and I kept Carter home from school until I had the opportunity to test myself for Covid. By Wednesday, the test results revealed that I was positive for Covid. I stayed away from my family while they quarantined at home, and then Carter started showing some symptoms, and he tested positive for Covid about a week later. A letter went home announcing that the K one cluster had another positive case. He was never a threat to anyone in the school because he wasn't in school when I was sick or later when he was sick. He's since recovered, and like most children, his case was very mild. Requiring a mask on my son is not appropriate for multiple reasons. First, he's recently Covid recovered, so he does not pose a threat to anyone in the school. But more importantly, having a mask on him will undoubtedly impede his learning, which is why he goes to school, and negatively impact the emotional and behavioral gains we have worked so hard to achieve. Everyone has a story, and parents should be the ones choosing what is best for their children and families. We uprooted our families to gain back the freedom that was taken from us in New York. Please revert to the original reopening plan and give the choice back to parents who feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and sharing your opinion.
Hi, John, you're doing a good job. Maybe the chance more with a lot of people in a lot of different capacities. Off stops from coaching kids, they ask them to think, or have. When we get to the end of the game, we want to make sure you've done everything possible. You left it all on the field, left all the track, on the jump, whatever it is that you're endeavoring, you're giving your all. I used to tour the school board, and we look back, that we're doing everything we possibly can to protect ourselves. I hate wearing pants, but I have to wear pants. It's part of the rules. Maybe in a couple of years, we can change that, and I won't have to wear pants. But that won't work here anymore, but there are no rules right now. But please, in light of this lighter moment, let's make sure when we look back and we lay in bed at the end of the night, that we're doing everything we possibly can to protect ourselves. Thank you.
Thanks for being here and sharing your opinion.
And always, oh, sorry, I'm Missy Atwood. I live on five hundred and eighty, and I'm here tonight not as your town librarian, just as, sort of, an apparent. John, you've always been a hard act to follow, although I want to point out, John, I'm not wearing pants right now, so. Actually, some food for thought, food for thought. What I really just want to take a moment to say is, so I also work for work in my role as a library director, oh, I guess I have got me a little bit like the library director. But I wanted to just take a minute and acknowledge the work that this elected board, who are volunteers, they are not paid a single penny for the time and the thought and the effort that they put in. And I know my own board, this is not what they signed up for when they ran for office, but God bless them, they're hanging in there. And I just want to take a minute and say to five of you, thank you for hanging in there. I understand that this is hard. I understand that this is hard work, and I very much appreciate the work that you do, and I want you to know I'm not the only person in the community that feels that way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your being here and sharing your thoughts.
John, this team stagecoach, Rose. The flyer that went out in the mail, and it's back there, has no mention of fundraising. I did not hear anything in the earlier sessions this evening about fundraising. So I understand you don't answer questions at this part of the meeting, but I would just encourage you, if there's going to be any private fundraising to offset the cost of the school construction, please get the word out on that. Because Sunapee's history, recent history, is that building projects have both a taxpayer contribution and a private contribution. So when our new library was built, the majority of the funds were donated privately. When the Sunapee Historical Society took over the old library, the majority of the funds were donated privately. And I think if you have no fundraising this year, and it does not get the result that you want, then please, going forward in the future, do something for fundraising, and if not this group in front of us, encourage others to do fundraising, whether it's a parent-teacher organization or a new foundation. Because I think if you would offer anything in terms of private fundraising, five percent, ten percent, and ask the taxpayers to come up with the rest, you would get a much more, you would get a result much more like the one that you want. And I just, this comes up every year, and I don't know why, year after year, there's just no effort whatsoever to do fundraising or to encourage other people to do fundraising.
Thanks for being here and sharing your thoughts.
Hi, Laura Piappa, North Road. I'm very nervous, but I do want to weigh in on the masking. I am here to advocate for optional masking. Those of us who support parent choice can and have shared the indisputable study that proves that cloth and surgical masks do not work in congregate settings. I emailed you the study this weekend, and Chris just outlined the results. It was just reported yesterday that the CDC will, quote, "likely advise people to wear N ninety-five and K N ninety-five masks." The latest variant is proving to be far more transmissible. This has led these so-called experts to now say that cloth masks are no more than place decoration. Last month, the former head of the CDC stated, "We now understand that cloth masks are not going to protect you from a virus that spreads through airborne transmission." Those of us who have been fighting for parent choice have known this all along. While Omicron may be more transmissible, the virus particle size or mode of transmission has not changed. This means for the past two years, we've been told to wear cloth over our faces when it was known that these masks are ineffective. I frequently analyze the New Hampshire State data to make sure Covid is not becoming a more dangerous threat to children. Here's what has occurred in New Hampshire, kids age zero to nineteen, from August twenty-third through yesterday. Positive cases in this age group have nearly tripled from approximately nineteen thousand to fifty-three thousand. To put this into context, there are around three hundred and forty-six thousand children in our state ages zero to nineteen. Cumulative hospitalizations for this age group have risen from twenty-nine, reported on August twenty-third, to forty-eight, reported yesterday, although this small number may actually be even lower. Last month, Dr. Fauci stated the following. If a child goes into the hospital, they automatically get tested for Covid, and they get counted as a Covid hospitalized individual, when in fact, they may go in for a broken leg or appendicitis or something like that. The blessing in the last two years has been that healthy children are largely spared from Covid, as evidenced by the statistics I just cited. What we do not know and cannot know is the risk in these continual mask-wearing may pose to the emotional and social well-being to the children, not to mention the potential decline in their academic progress. It was recently reported that there was a fifty-one percent increase in suicide attempts in girls ages twelve to seventeen since the start of the pandemic. The statistics alarming and horrifying. The unknown consequences could be why the United States is only one of seven Western countries who are masking their young children in school. Perhaps all of the other countries did the risk assessment that my husband and I have done when it comes to our daughter and came to the same conclusion. Many of us who oppose to ma- mask mandates understand the only real mitigation strategy is that you need to keep children home when they are sick and keep staff home when they are sick. We do this, and we don't want anyone to get sick, but we don't think the science supports the masking, and we are very scared of the downstream effects. I urge you to take this into careful consideration when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you for being. Just try to probably applaud for Laura, and thank you for being there, Laura, and sharing your thoughts, for your emails.
My name is Samantha Bailey. I live on Lower Main Street. I'm here for my great kids, but I have also been an early educator, and I run a preschool program, summer camp program. I am connected to many families throughout the town, and I speak for all of our kids. This is really hard. You guys can all see that parents are scared. Parents are scared for the fear factor that we see in the media all the time about Covid, whether it's, however you want to interpret that. Parents are scared for the long-term consequences of our children. This is a difficult spot. This is difficult for all of us. I don't deny the hard work that this board or the teachers and staff and administration have all put in to try to make the best of the situation. I want to believe in and support Sunapee schools, but I can't support what's happening right now. We need to take a serious look at what it is that we, as Sunapee, want. The current pandemic has changed the game. The plans in place were meant to be temporary as a safety measure, but cannot continue to be the long-term solution. This is like sprinting to win, but come to find out it's a marathon. We have to decide to admit. We have to decide to admit that this is for the long haul. It's not going anywhere. It's not going anywhere, anywhere fast. We've got to change the strategy. It's going to take all of you guys, and it's going to take all of the families, putting the differences aside and working together if you want to move forward with the new school and keep what we used to have, what I'm still here for, what people are losing and leaving their families behind to get away from, the mandates, the madness. They're coming here, they want to be here. This is our chance. I said back in October when I stood up here to speak, if this continues, there will be a significant decline in enrollment as families will make the choices that they need for their own families and they will seek out alternative education. This will devastate the nature of our closed-knit, school-focused community, and it is important that we take this seriously. I understand that everyone is in a hard place. I hope that we can figure out how to work together. Whether we have to put together some specialty meetings, have dialogue, have opportunities to ask the questions and get the answers. I don't know if we have to change the structure of the board so that the board can be more available to answer questions to families when they have them, or if we can be more transparent in how do we get answers when we have concerns? Because we have concerns and we don't feel like our needs are being met. We might have to change the game. There's a lot at stake. I'm willing to work with anyone for the sake of our kids. We all need to do what's best for our families.
Respectfully, you're over time. If you want to finish up, I'll respect that.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and sharing your voice.
Hi, I'm Laura Slobie in North Road. I just want to go on record and echo what everyone has said opposing the mask mandate, that I can have children in school also with COVID. I don't think it does them any good. And I think in looking after our children's health, we have to look after their psychological health as well. So I just want to be on record as a parent that I oppose the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right, seeing the motion, I appreciate the comments, people being open, passionate, and respectful of different opinions. We're going to go to the school update, starting with the elementary school.
Well, if I had to give a title to this past month, I would call it "A Season of Celebrating, Pivoting, and Rethinking", because that's what we spent the last month doing. Some celebration kind of things, we had a home reading program, which was a huge success, where we encouraged the children to read at home, and they filled in color light bulbs, and we had them hanging around the school, made the school look very festive. We also had a month that we called "The December to Remember", activities to celebrate December. But we had to rethink some of those things, like our Jingle Bell Blitz, which normally we pack 150 kids in the gym and have this massive field day-like experience, and couldn't do that this year, but we were still able to do it in a small group and had multiple small groups throughout the day being able to do those activities. Our first remote day, last Friday, was a huge success. Teachers were able to prepare students, they were able to send home paper materials, plus have things on remote on their Chromebooks, so it was a success. We are preparing for our spelling bee. Again, it's rethinking how we do it, because normally we have a library filled with the student body and parents, and this year we're going to have to do it virtually and have parents watch it on the Google Meet. So there's been a number of things we've had to rethink. Our winter activities program, which has been our huge traditional program for over 40 years, involving going to skiing on the mountain, we had to rethink that because a variety of things happened, from working with the mountain, but also having other venues that were not available, transportation issues. There were a number of issues, but we are now in the process of planning a modified winter activities program, which will be on house, and I think will be just as fun, will be outside. But we're doing it on a series of Fridays in February, so we're looking forward to that. Our upcoming Valentine's Day senior project that we've done for years, again, just rethinking it and how do we do this in the midst of COVID. And then we're also looking at our professional development. On Tuesday, we're looking forward to that with offering, in the morning we have a district activity, but in the afternoon, really looking at curriculum and kind of seeing where we are and where we want to move forward. So like I said, if I had to give a title to this past month, it's been celebrating, but also pivoting and rethinking constantly of how we do things. So it's been an interesting past month at the elementary school.
It's been an interesting month. I'd like to echo what we said, because one of the most exciting days of this late year or day before, all the great activities, which have been following for them, unfortunately. But I don't know if it's how, unfortunately, the snow day before, so I think it was a little upset, but it did do it. But I think it was probably offset by the snow day before vacation wasn't the most of a, it was a bonus. Students are getting ready for midterms next week, our high school students in particular. Getting the spelling bee tomorrow night, so a lot of the activities are slow going on. I think that sense of normalcy is good. What's been difficult a little bit, we have had higher numbers in the elementary school recently. But I think kind of like tonight, I love things that the principal makes me very happy. You know, talking to the principal, I might brought this up in the class. See if kids are getting in fights in the disciplines, or the coordination, or the parents not being polite necessarily. People, we just don't see that. It's been great. The parents have been understanding. Students have been understanding, but I've been first speaker, and I said about it as well, it's not made that for all, it's really deep. All the time. So I think, you know, from a principal's standpoint, I think what's important is the kids have been pretty good, but I think it's important as well, I'm hoping that whatever we do in the past, we keep in mind that's important. Because I do think there's a piece where we all want to get back to what that looks like, what's going to happen. But I hope it's not made things as long as it is possible. And I think the work with all the activities that we're trying to do that's going to be possible. So really appreciate the work of the teachers and the parents and the students who have been, I think it's positive this kid be given everything. So it's really important to the principal, just to support everybody.
Great, thank you. Our, Sunapee chooses to have a student rep, who was here briefly, but he's working at the mountain. And I'm pretty sure the mountain's open because of, most of the scanners are high school, Sunapee high school students. But he's been working, he's got midterms, and clearly had a lot on his plate. So Cam Messenger is at home studying. I'm reading this, which was his update he was going to read. I'm not editing it, I'm not changing it, I haven't actually read it, just going to read it for him, because I think our board has honored the student voice in the past. From E S Chair, it is very important to just hear directly from the students without any filters. So this is directly from Cam, our student rep. His update is, "Students are happy to have their well-deserved Christmas break and are glad to be back. With that said, the quarter is ending and midterms are starting this week, so that causes stressful environment for students as they are studying for their exams. On top of that, COVID has had a big impact on classes too. We've had many cases, and students have been worried about the possibility of quarantining over their midterms. Students have been evading by the mask mandate for the most part, which has stopped any possible large outbreaks. Sports are still continuing to do well. Nordic skiing has had a couple meets since we've returned from vacation. Alpine is yet to have a meet, but we hope to have our first one next Friday. Basketball is continuing to do well. However, the boys' basketball team has had some rough patches with COVID and with players injured." So that's from Cam, our student rep. So I appreciate his engagement in this and fitting us in with his very busy school year. We'll move on next to the superintendent update, please.
I saw talking tonight. Just continuing through all of this that's going on, it's worn around us. Our primary focus continues to be on education, making sure the kids are compliant with the education they need, to be successful to move on to the next grade level, to move on to that post-secondary opportunity that may be presented. We talked about our schools, our high schools' preparation process. I was talking about things at the elementary school, our teachers continue to, continue to look at the primary focus and the goal of our student team and school landscape and education. So through all of this, we're able to sift that, push that aside, deal with it as we need to on a personal level, on a public level, but our priorities here is to be focused on education. So really just thanking our teachers for that continued focus and pulling on. I can't tell you how many meetings I have had, superintendents and administrators and school boards and other state legislators in first team here once COVID, COVID, COVID. I do think we sometimes get ourselves into COVID conversation. We forget about who we're here for truly, and that is to educate our kids and our students. And we'll do that, our schools will do that, and they'll be able to do that in a safe way. Continuing to let kids learn. So never want to lose focus on education. Lastly, because I know most people that follow this and I'm becoming sort of obsessed with it, there are currently 17 pages worth of LSARs, LSARs are proposed bills, proposed laws that were put in front, either from the House or the Senate and the committee. Those bills that are being reviewed in committee and potentially get passed by either House or Senate or the governor's desk inside of the laws. Interesting enough, a lot of the LSARs, I think most people intend on LSARs having a good intent. There's never an LSAR that somebody's writing, I say that in the spirit of democracy. But people are writing an LSAR because they feel there's a potential positive effect on that LSAR. But there are some LSARs, I think that people don't necessarily really, legislators do not really think about the impact of those LSARs on education. So those 17 pages, those are just on education. I was talking about across the state, I'm just talking about 17 pages of LSARs on our education. I'll give you a couple examples of what I mean. So here's a great intent piece of legislation. So the piece of legislation says that physical education should be provided so that elementary school pupils engage in physical activity, in physical education for a minimum of 150 hours per week, and high school students engage at a minimum of 225 minutes per week. Was it a phys ed major? Love it, man, love it. For our students to participate in 150 or 225 hours a minute per week, we would not only have to build a new gym, we'd need a high school for physical education. So currently, our elementary school teachers, they have about 90 minutes, I'm going to say 80 to 90 minutes. Our middle high school teachers, our middle high school students have elected. A lot of our kids choose to participate in elective. That wasn't extracurricular, so that was not about sports, that was something about phys ed. So you think about the course, or right, the students in our middle high school, specific high school, taking AP, getting to our libraries, accelerated math class, and now potentially looking at two other periods a week of physical education. Again, love the idea, love the healthy concept, but the legislation itself is flawed. Good idea, not followed, completely followed through and whatnot. Another piece of legislation is very similar, asking students to take a philosophy class. Again, nothing against philosophy, I think everyone should be exposed to it, exposed to myself in college, but mandatory things like that have ramifications for schools. Now, that tower is meant to talk about one of the special lettings that really has an impact, and potentially could have an impact here. But just so folks know, folks, I heard last year about the Freedom Education Accounts. Freedom Education Accounts were for scholarships who provide students whose family cover or certain poverty level. Supposedly have a very minimal impact on monies coming out of school districts. Supposedly you've got saved monies, school districts money. For whatever reason, after that legislation was passed last year, there are now 22 LSARs regarding freedom of education. And while something was put in place, and now a year later, we're not even really going through a full year, there are 22 other pieces of legislation just regarding freedom of education. So again, I just put that on your plate. I know sometimes you got to geek out a little bit. And it's not, it's good to read before you go back, because it'll put you there. But if you haven't followed some of the LSARs that are going on in your town and the state, and what they have to do with education, what they have to do with the second amendment, what they have to do with many of other things, finances. I suggest you just pay attention. I also suggest that you contact your local rep. So we have Rotana, Rotana, Gossup here in Sunapee, and Russ Ward is our center, our daughter. I thought it was Eric, but I thought he is our center. So just, if you have an opportunity, if there's something you're interested in or definitely looking at, I host website, the Sunapee website, you can do a quick bill search, you can do our words, you can do our numbers. We need to be paying attention. It's powerful. We all have our responsibility to pay attention to what's going around us, because sometimes things get passed, we don't know their impact, and all of a sudden we go, how did we get it? Because, you got to get it because it gets passed, and you don't pay attention. So that's been going by time, along with a lot of other things that we talked about tonight. And just lastly, I'll just touch on snow days and remote snow days, and remote learning days. We had the opportunity to have a snow day, which was great. Haven't had one in a year. But we have a remote instructional day in place for a reason. So that's super important. Again, my priority not only is to make sure students are properly educated and teachers are doing things that we try to do, services and programs are in place, but to obviously ensure the safety and well-being of all kids in Austin. And our ability to have a remote instructional day really gives me that flexibility. So the storm that came in last week, set three inches, might go up, might go down, follow that stormwise. It hit right in the commute of when our teachers were coming to school. We have, we have 118 people that work for this district that will be coming to the school on the roads. I'm responsible for each one of those individuals, as well as the 401 students. And I know some of those students don't drive, it may take a bus, but may be in a car, or maybe in a siblings vehicle. So there's a lot of people that are catching on the roads. And so when I make the call of a remote stay, a remote instruction day or a snow day, I understand that I'm trying to do my best to do that, looking at the safety and well-being of everyone being on the roads, when that storm hits, what's the predictability of that storm? Having a remote instructional day really gives me a lot more flexibility to not have to put another day in June, so we're not going to do 22nd, 23rd, but get an instructional day in the year where we'll teach. Just want to touch on that, get on that.
Thanks. Any questions? All right, school board topics. What are things you're hearing, talking about, on your mind? You can have a lot, you can have none, but do you do?
I have one question. The question is for you, Russ. Do you have any updates that you can share on the discussions with Andover and the tuition and desire from them?
Yes, Gary. I was contacted back in early December from the vice chair of the Andover School Board, Jonathan. His name's close to me. And I'm waiting to get back to him. So they were forming questions, and they were going through that process and then they get back to me with some, still wanting more comprehensive questions, but they said they had interest of looking towards Sunapee might get the offer as far as the tuition.
And do we know if they're looking at a choice option or sort of an all-in?
I'm not sure. They officially gave an address to you, is my understanding.
Right, okay, thanks.
Hopefully, we have an actionable update with everything else going on in February meeting. Look forward to hearing more about that. Anything else? Four topics that you're hearing, people are asking you about?
Yeah, I just want to bring up the website, Better S E S, that the S B T O is. Want to talk about that?
Sure. And before you preach, or after I do that, can we, I meant to keep it over the table and outside. Just can we go back to it?
Sure.
Yes.
So just three other questions, so it's on the table. The question on fundraising, last year the P T O stepped forward, said they'd be happy to sponsor some fundraising. It's a P T O on their website, has the ability for people to go and make pledges as a monetary amount of pledge. They're not collecting money, it's just making a pledge. You go to the Better S E S website, we have a link from our website, to the P T O website. The P T O website is handling that and things. As they've asked to take on that, and that ended up to take pledges. on that, to pick that end up, to take pledges, donations if you will, towards the project. And the P T O will be speaking at our community forum next Wednesday.
So it helps people that this is your first meeting or have been to one for a while. When it comes to fundraising, the board has to, we're here for policy, contract negotiations and safe building space, which is, this project is an example of that. We need to focus on that and then for the fundraising, we certainly welcome all donations. Everybody here tonight can donate, but it's not, like this, the way I talk about it is it's just not really appropriate for the board to be bringing warrants that'll impact tax dollars while also being the act of fundraising. The school board needs to stay in their lane on what we're supposed to do, which is what we're doing. And then the parent-teacher organization or other groups that have interest can contribute, hopefully assertively with donations that brings the total project cost down. But just for clarity, it's sort of the role of the school board and the role of the parent-teacher organization or just any person that wants to make a donation. So I hope that context is helpful. And then we're going to go back to Tara, we didn't mean to miss you there, sorry.
Yeah, no worries. So Russ just asked me to provide an example of some of the bills that we're following currently. There are currently two proposed bills, one in the House and one in the Senate, that are relative to the definition of a child with a disability, which if these are implemented, the plan would be for them to be implemented in June and for our budget, that would have a $100,000 impact. So that's why it's really important that we're paying attention to these bills and watching them. This has to do with raising the age for how long students with disabilities can get services, which I don't, again, I don't think anybody objects to in and of itself, but it's a, it's a funding stream issue to some extent and it's also an equity issue in terms of what gen ed students get versus what students with disabilities get. So there are a couple, there are multiple issues, but what you guys need to know right off the bat is that if that were to happen, it would have a $100,000 impact on our budget for next year that I have not budgeted for because the law's not in place at this point.
Thanks for the insight. Please.
Just like to touch real quick, I wanted to get lost back as a member of the school board, I would listen to the people in the audience tonight who are speaking without no masks. The thing that I find very difficult sitting here and I'm just speaking for myself is the amount of emails and conversations that people have for us about wearing masks, it's not being worked today, whether you're for or not, but it's very hard when you get emails directly as a school board member saying you need to do something about your superintendent who's acting reckless because we don't have masks. And that was what I dealt with in the first month of school, we backed up and we tried to know mask policy, having teachers reach out requesting masks. You know, the people who are in here, the no masks, the people... I don't know who else as a group, I've received those, but I sit here feeling a little, trying to find the right word, is I feel like the audience that's here today, someone feels that it's helpless what they're speaking and I just want to know why and I'm listening. But I also want to put out there as a school board member, we're receiving just as many complaints on the other side from when we didn't have masks. That's a very difficult situation because if you go to a no mask policy, and I understand again, for children, and we keep talking about the children, the ages of the children, it doesn't affect the children, the stats are there and I agree, but the one stat that's not there is what happened in my family is when your kids bring it home to an adult and the adult is the one that sickens in the hospital. We're not talking about that as a group as well. And that has been brought up by other parents too. Yes, our kids are safe, but when they catch COVID and bring it home, have it two days, you don't know your kids have it and you're ending up with COVID and continuing the transmission down the road, is how people have said that as a school board with our first policy, we were acting recklessly by not enforcing masks. And I can tell you, as many as people have said, you're going to lose your students for requiring masks, I've had probably half a dozen say, you're going to lose the students if you don't have a mask policy and you sit here somewhat helpless. My opinion is some protection is better than no protection. Russ, is there any way that it is a forum for the school boards that you can reach out and find out what the general school systems, if there's 110 schools in New Hampshire, what the general census is of what schools are doing for masks versus no masks, to help us have a little better education on what the school districts are doing?
So that information was actually collected beginning of the year of the Department of Education, because required on the opening plans. Unfortunately, they never published that information, never reviewed that statistic. I can tell you just from my interactions, you're going to find it spread out there. So my children's school, one of my children's school, high school is in a mask mandate, the elementary school is not, in the same time, sort of due to the consistency of that same time. Schools that have been in a mask year round have continued to have had numbers of COVID. Schools that have had optional masks continue to have had numbers of COVID. I'll talk about sort of our situation, but I know really, I don't have that data, and I can ask the D E report, I have to provide it to this point, but I think what I know in my conversation with Frank and Tom, is breakdown, and just wish you shared the work of people that are struggling on both sides.
Thank you. I was going to make a similar comment, so your public service, you can see it with what some of the select board goes through the other boards do, is probably the most emotional for people responding to the school board and administration choices, because it's their children, it's their families, it's their beliefs. So I just, I'm not looking for compassion or understanding or comment, but I do, yeah, you hear from both. If we don't have masks, what's going to happen? If we do have masks and both, this is America, you're allowed to both be right, but as a board in the middle that has to keep, support the administration and decision-making, challenge decision-making in the best interest of safety, it is, this time really, really sucks and we're all sick of it. But my own contribution of one voice out of five is if there are things that we can do and that affects behaviors, it gets us a slightly better chance of keeping the students safe and in school and by extension the families, then we have to try, even though a chunk in the community is completely pissed at us and very eloquent in explaining why, which I totally respect. It's also wearing my hat as, not as a parent, but just as a board member, in New Hampshire, we don't have the option to go remote for the students, which in the height of this may have helped or not, but my own opinion, and I don't, I don't want to upset anybody, but in the spirit of understanding and dialogue, any last shred of anything we can do to keep the kids in the school and not isolated at home and quarantined, I just worry about them, I think about it every day, how do they catch up? And some of these families, it was ripped through and they've missed a few weeks, even with the shortened guidelines and the evolving guidelines from the CDC, how do they catch up? They get isolated, how are they doing emotionally? And so their isolation is my biggest fear and then when it comes to, you know, really eloquent speakers with data that they're presenting on both sides, it's, it's, five of us are not in a position where we're going to get everybody happy for any time, let alone all the time. So I appreciate again, the community willingness to have productive dialogue with vehement disagreement as we try to work our way through this, because there's definitely very loud voices from both sides. So I'm hoping that we can be a community that continues the dialogue, even if we're really pissed at each other, in the spirit of moving forward and coming through this on the other side. I'm thankful to live in Sunapee because we can have really hard conversations, reach some understanding and absolutely agree that we disagree.